I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lewisburg area Board of School Directors. If we could all please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It still seems weird doing that.
I know. I can't get used to it either.
All right. Just two quick announcements this evening. We did meet an executive session last Thursday, May 7th, for about two hours to discuss several personnel matters. And we also met an executive session this evening for about 30 minutes to discuss a personnel matter as well. Those are my two announcements. We do have the whole board this evening. So moving on to comments to the board, I will open up the floor to any citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. Are there any citizens who would like to address the board at this time on an agenda item? John, do we have anybody waving at us or?
I don't see anybody raising their hands. If you are raising your hand, we'll give it just a second. Nope, I don't see anybody.
All right, we will move on then to the select presentations and we'll move on to the annual food service report.
All right, Kevin, take it away.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is really weird to talk to you all this way. But anyway, just, just a couple of things we'll go through a quick. It's a similar report to what we do each year. Point of interest, obviously, the COVID-19 shutdown has been a challenge. We're continuing with meal preparations and service to families in need. We've done, what is it, John, over 30,000 plus meals so far?
Pretty close, yeah.
To the community, which is just outstanding. The principals have been wonderful. The, the police officers with the district have been wonderful. They, they'll take turns taking meals out to different areas of the community. And there's a greater need than, than what we all really realize, but we're providing breakfast and lunches, hot meals and cold. We try to vary it each time. The, mostly the comments from parents are overwhelmingly positive, so that, that's been a good thing. We're trying to use as much food and products that we've already purchased and we're already in stock to try and limit our expenses because with labor still being paid, we do get some reimbursement in doing this, but not near what we need to cover our costs, so. Anyway, it's going to continue till May 29th. It's a big hit to the revenue, as it says here. This, this year I've gone to, I'm the president of the local food service directors group, the PASBO. So we, we have monthly meetings and we try and stay on top of things that are coming down the pike and, and I've gone to a couple tri-county meetings and PASBO meetings and, and, you know, to stay informed and, and make good decisions for, for us here at Lewisburg. We had administrative review earlier. No real major findings. It went really well. Just a couple of little things. They always find a couple of little things, but overall, they were pleased with how we're operating and I was real pleased with, with our staff and, and how they, how they just do quality work day in and day out. So appreciate them a lot. I guess, John, we can go to the food service financials. Again, this is all just self-explanatory, revenue and expenses. The unfortunate part about this year is when we closed down mid-March, mid-March is right at the time when our revenue spikes and our expenses start to fall. This pretty much happens because we get an onslaught of USDA commodity foods and, which is free to us as public school, and we really emphasize those foods in our menu. And so by the end of the year, we, we have erased the deficit in general, and, and, and usually we have made a little money each year, so. But this year, obviously, that's not going to happen. That's why we're trying to use up just everything that we already have in stock. So we're, we're doing what we can with what we have. Next slide, John. Again, there's the revenue comparison from 1819 last year to 1920 this year. It's nearly identical. And you can see right when we started to slide because of the closure. So that's, that's just, does anybody have any questions? Please stop me if you do. Again, expenditures, pretty similar. There's some minor highs and minor lows, but it's, it's, it's pretty similar as it's been last year and the year before that, year before that, so. That's pretty typical for us. And again, for next year, you know, when we'll feed, how we'll feed, if we'll feed, nobody knows yet. We're all hoping certainly we'll be back and we'll, we'll have some semblance of order and normalcy, and we look forward to that. But, you know, there's still the outstanding negative lunch balances. The state of Pennsylvania really didn't do us any favors by, by the, the whole, they call it lunch shaming. It's, it really was never that I saw that anybody was being shamed. It was just our way of communicating through the student to the parent. You know, hey Johnny, you about used your lunch money up. And, you know, Johnny would go home, tell his parents, and we'd have a check the next day. But that's, we, we're not allowed to do that and, or say anything. And so the negative balance issue is huge, not just for us, but just about every public school. So it's just how it goes. And staffing is a concern. I'm anxious to see how it will be since a lot of people are out of work right now. I know it's historical, but many of those folks are getting unemployment and making as much or more than they were when they were working. So there's no real urgency for them to apply for work. But that's, that's about where we're at. A couple of positive things at the high school. Prior to us shutting down, we started serving sushi for the first time, which was a huge hit. Kids loved it. We would run out all the time. We really emphasized some homemade soups on our soup and salad bar. Our kitchen manager, Amanda, she would email the staff at the high school and, and the staff really start to participate. That was great. Started offering crazy things like, you know, just a bagel with different toppings at lunchtime there, too. So that's the place we can really experiment and try new things. We're kind of locked in at the elementary level, especially with their taste buds or, or lack thereof. They like what they like. But, so.
Try sushi with kindergarten.
Pardon me?
Try sushi with kindergarten.
Okay, Mr. Rowe, I'll take some up to your office and let you try it, see how it goes. Is there any questions from anybody?
Kevin, I do want to jump in on the outstanding lunch debt. You know, the board is now one year into the eligibility, connecting eligibility to unpaid student fines and lack and failure to return school property and equipment. It's been very successful on the side of returning school property, whether that be technology, textbooks, athletic uniforms. That has been extremely successful. On the lunch side, we find that we, we've made a dent, but the majority of the kids with the largest debt aren't participating in activities and therefore have no real incentive to clear up that debt.
Right. But to, to that point, we do, we have seen some slight improvement. At the end of last school year, we had over $16,000 worth of food service debt. And right now, we're only standing just under $12,000. So there has been a reduction, but we're not, you know, back to zero or the low numbers that we had several years ago.
Like I said, I think it's a dent and luckily it hasn't increased as a result of that, of that tying into eligibility.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the board for that because that, that certainly has been helpful.
Board, any other questions or anything else for Kevin? All right, Kevin, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And we will certainly follow up if we do have any other questions or anything.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So with that, we will move on to board action. Under old business, the 2020, 2021 Parent-Student Handbook. Dr. Skomper.
This has been on the agenda a little, a couple of times tabled. I think we got back and fixed up what needed to be done, working very closely with Dr. Jablonsky, thank you very much. And we swapped some emails today. I think we're ready for the board to approve the handbooks.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the handbook as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brousse. Sorry, I think there was a second.
Secondly, Mrs. Clark.
Seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion?
I didn't, I don't see any change. I know we exchanged some emails today and I know I'm driving people crazy with this, but the point of adding an acknowledgement sheet at the front is to not print copies. And for example, the front of the Kelly Handbook still says, "If you received two copies of this because of siblings, please send the other one back," is on the very first page of, of the handbook. Also, I didn't get a chance honestly to look at the Lindtown one. I know it got uploaded today, but I was busy with work and stuff, so I didn't get a chance to finish looking at that. I would also like us to consider that we should, the handbooks are for the parents and kids together. And for next year, we might want to consider some new guidance. Actually, some new guidance just came out today with respect to schools. For example, in the handbooks we have now, it says, "If your child is had a fever in the last 24 hours or vomited in the last 24 to 48 hours, keep them home." But with the guidance that just came out from CDC, the kids are supposed to be three days fever-free before returning. A couple of little things like that. I, I think so much new guidance is coming out about schools and childcare facilities daily that I, I would want us to consider some of that for a handbook next year. Also, with respect to absences, we don't have the policy language necessarily that would go along with the type of extended absence that would be required if a kid actually tested positive. So we might want to consider building some of that in, especially at the elementary level where we do have some of these, you know, the parents monitoring the children a little bit more closely, I would say, than maybe at the middle and high school level. And that, honestly, those just came out today. I saw the CDC ones for schools and childcare.
Well, is this something that should be in this handbook? I mean, may, could be tabled and bring, bring it more up to date?
That's what I was hoping, is we could wait until, say, like July, when more guidance will come out.
Yeah, I agree. You raise some good points.
Administrators are there?
What's that?
I was just going to ask that the building level, level principals, are there any concerns if the board does table this for a little bit to, you know, kind of send it back or at least hold off to review some of the recommendations? Are there any issues that I'm not aware of if we table this and come back to it another month or two?
Just speaking historically, that we have actually asked many times if we could have the summer to do our handbooks because things change. And so we're trying to get them ready in January and early February and then having to make some revisions over the summer. So I don't know how the other principals, but I would welcome if we changed just in general when we present the handbook so that it can have the most current and up-to-date information, which we don't always have in, in even just a normal year, let alone in a year such as this. So speaking for the high school, I am certainly fine with that.
Middle school as well, absolutely.
Yeah, because you guys are both electronic already, so it would be, you know, it's a matter of just uploading for you guys, right? At this point. And then it, moving the elementary school to that as well. And one of the things, when we got that list of electronic forms, we could have one of, you know, the, the new electronic forms that were, I was very excited about. One of those could be a version of the acknowledgement sheet, and we might want to modify it specifically for next year to have some of these bullet points that you're seeing come out. Like, I acknowledge that if my child gets a fever, I'll hold them up for three days, or, you know, some of the, the more specific things, just, I think next year is going to be so different and, and just unique circumstances.
I agree.
And Dr. Jablonsky, just with regard to your question about the, the one page in the Kelly Handbook, we did decide that we were not going to print those next year, so that decision was already made. But we're, I, I, the district is also moving to a way to be able to electronically have people be able to, to sign off on, on that. That's not in place yet, so I would change that cover sheet to reflect those options. But we also will need to keep some type of sheet for those families that don't have online access and we will, and will request a printed handbook and we may have to send one home. So I will keep some version of that, but we also want to reflect that we want people to use the electronic sign-off. And we will not be printing copies for everybody, only upon request.
And I think, Jordan, that's what I had sent to you, that, you know, recommendation of language for the acknowledgement sheet kind of thing.
Right.
And maybe we can make that uniform.
Is there a reason that, Paula, you had mentioned that typically, you know, you've requested that it be a little later. Is there a reason why it was continued to be brought up this early? Was there, you know, was it just for printing purposes that we?
Yeah, it used to be for printing and actually there it was because of Lindtown and the high school. Once upon a time in the agendas we sent home, it had the handbook in the front and then the same way at the high school. And then the high school, of course, since we've been one-to-one, we haven't. You know, we've, I think the first year put it online and then at, or still did a printout one, but basically we did it online and had them download it as part of the image and, and things like that. And at Lindtown, the main reason it was done then was so it could be printed in the front of the agenda books.
That got sent out to a company to publish.
And so they had to have it in March.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to, you know, double check and make sure there were no other reasons. So, you know, at this point, I did make myself a note that, you know, for next year, we can, you know, revisit this a little bit later. Is, so we have a motion, a second on the table. Any other discussion? Or do we want to have a motion to table this topic?
I motion to table the topic.
I second it.
All right. So the motion to table by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor to table this motion? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So we will table that and we will revisit that. You know, in at least June, July, we'll revisit that topic. So moving on to the backup generator replacement. John, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah, we brought this to the board previously and went back and looked at it at your direction. And in talking with Mr. Schrader, we do not believe that the additional generator capacity is necessary for what we require. And so we are back with a recommendation to go with the base quote to replace our aging backup generators at Kelly and Middle School. Mr. Guiengos is also on, if you have any questions for him as well.
So moved.
All right. So moved by Dr. Jablonsky. Is there a second?
Second, Dr. Zimmerman.
Seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion?
I'm really pleased. Thank you for taking a second look.
No problem.
All right. Paula, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fasero?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you, Paula. The next item is the Pauling Storage Container Pad Replacement. John, I will turn it over, Delbert, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay, um, yeah, the quote we have from T. Ross Brothers, you can see on your screen there. There is an option A and an option B. Option A is inside the fence between the concession stand and the grandstand. And option B is outside the fence, just north of the grandstand there. Option B is a little more expensive because of the grading that would be necessary. It's a little more sloped than where option A is, but we have the container and we just need the board to tell us where you want us to place it.
Is there a preference for option B? Like, can we hear the merits of both locations? Option A looks like it's close to get stuff in and out of when you have to travel.
I think it's an aesthetic. I think it's an aesthetic. B is a little more expensive, but it's also a little more out of the way and out of sight lines.
Are we not proud of our shipping container that we're painting dragon green?
I mean, right?
Fits right in with all the other sheds.
It's not a shed.
The only thing I would say is option B, when people are there to see a sporting event, you, you can, like, that option, where option A is, a lot of people actually gather there. So that's the only other thing I would say there.
Yeah.
I would motion for option B.
I would second that.
So moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Ms. Stanton, I believe. Any discussion? No, not Ms. Sorry, I missed that.
Did I misunderstand that option B is more expensive?
Yeah.
Option B is more expensive and Dr. Unziger Fasero seconded.
Thanks.
Is there a benefit?
But it's, I do, I have been to the track when people are there and that area right there is like, people stretch in that little grassy spot, you know? Am I thinking of this the right way?
So.
Wetzel's nodding. Am I thinking of the right spot? Is this where people stretch and stuff? Okay.
And do they not stretch where the option B container is?
It's outside the fence.
And can they stretch somewhere else?
Having been up there once or twice, there's a lot of room to stretch. I'm just.
Right?
It's right by the bathroom, so. Now, I'm thinking of, because the option A is inside the fence, option B, you have to be outside the fence. You'd actually have to like, get over the fence by the bleachers to.
Is there a benefit to having it inside the fence?
That's what I was going to ask as well.
Yeah. Is there a benefit to having it inside the fence? Maybe more secure having it in there?
Well, it'd be more secure, but the storage container itself will be locked. It'd either be locked when the mats are contained in it and/or be empty.
Have we had input from Mark Temple and our coach?
John, I believe, John, I believe you said that it was no preference?
I, I believe they didn't have a preference. Delbert, can you confirm that they did not have a preference?
So option B was the original site that Mark wanted. And then when they went out to look, when we went out to look at it with T. Ross, it was going to be, it's a little bit more slanted. So, yeah, it's a little bit more expensive. So Mark then asked what the possibility of option A was. But, yeah. So the original, the original plan was to put it where option B is. But either way is good with him. So it's not, there's not really a big preference.
Is there any concern for taking the mats? I would imagine they're not extremely easy to move. Are their gates closed? Are they taking the mats through the opening of the concession, you know, in between the concession and the bathroom? How are they getting the mats from inside to outside?
There are gates. There's a gate right next to option B and then inside the fence, you just have the small four-foot gate to go through because that's inside the six-foot fence.
But option A is actually inside the fence?
Yes, option A is inside the fence, right there where the handicap parking is, is where the fence is. And then it just goes along and then that, right there on the left-hand side of the bleachers, that little four-foot area of gravel, that is actually the fence to the left of that. And then it goes up. You can kind of see the gray line above option B. That's the fence there. So B is actually outside the six-foot fence and A is inside the six-foot fence.
So A is more affordable and more convenient.
Is there ever a time in which people in the handicap spots don't come in and view the activity from their cars and therefore could not do it with option A?
In the rain, in the rain, yeah.
Yeah.
So please consider that.
Yeah, that is a thought. Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion, a second on the table for option B. Any other discussion?
Other than I don't like it. No.
Then I will do a roll call vote, please, Paula.
I withdrew my motion. I feel like people were, people convinced me for A. Are we, are we all sure A, I mean, B rather?
I find. I was, I was pretty strongly about A, but I actually wondered about parking view and then didn't worry about it until actually Steve mentioned that it was handicap parking. So if it's raining and that's the only way you can see your kid.
Okay.
How much, I mean, I'm looking at the, so there's the, the track, obviously, and then there's also fetal hockey in the middle. How much of that can actually be seen from the vehicle? I've never parked there in the handicap.
That's a finish line right there, isn't it, you guys?
Yeah.
I mean, that's sort of the important place to be able to see.
And that's why that so many people congregate there.
The other issue that you're going to run into is that four-foot fence right there above to the north of option A, that's where a lot of people stand as well. So I don't know how much of a view line people sitting in their cars have anyway, because I know when I've been to track meets, there's people standing all along that fence line as well.
True.
So Erin, you did or did not withdraw your, your motion?
I can't decide. I was really sold on B.
Well, I think it's better to go with B because if you have option A and that's where, quote, "people gather", do we want that much traffic on that site once we get it, you know, installed? I think that option B is going to be away from the traffic where people gather. That's why, yes, it's a little more expensive, but in the long run, we may have to do more maintenance on option A if that gets ripped up.
Can, can either scroll up or remind me of the cost difference?
Eight hundred bucks.
Eight hundred and thirty dollars difference.
Eight hundred bucks. I mean, no brainer.
All right, Rebecca.
All right, then B. Then B. I'm convinced now.
Are you offering $800, Mary? Because I'll take it.
Take out my taxes.
All right, so.
Can I, can I interject one more thing real quick just to pass this along? Mr. Temple, when we were out there talking to, the other thing that he did mention with option A is because it's such a tall container, that to the north side of that, there's always the potential for advertisements where people would be able to see them when they're inside, walking past to the bleachers to and for the concession stand. So that was another point that he had made when we originally talked about moving to option A versus B. The only reason for, like, for me, option B is viable is because it is really only $830. You know, I, I thought it was going to be a little bit more money to move to, to get it there at B. So that's another thing that Mr. Temple did bring up, too. Because of where that, that container is set, there's always the availability to put advertisements and stuff on there where people are actually going to see it. But I think you might have, have it the same way for the discus and shop put, too, so.
Can I ask just one more question? The inconvenience of it for moving things in and out, how often is that happening?
It'll be twice a year. It'll be at the beginning of the season.
It's not like the kids are going to be doing it every practice, so.
No, it'll be, it'll be, they'll be, they'll pull the mats out at the beginning of the season, set everything up, and then they won't be put back in the container until the season's over. So they'll only be moving things in and out twice.
Okay.
So it seems to me that to put this big behemoth of a thing, empty thing, in this high-traffic area, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I think it's worth the extra money to have it in a, in a lower-use area of the property. It doesn't sound like that poses any inconvenience. And since that was Mark Temple's initial preference, I, I find that persuasive.
We'd ask some art students to paint it for us.
I do know the Green Dragon Foundation has gone through and, you know, looked at a lot of different fundraising and advertising opportunities as well. So, I mean, option A might provide us two sides for them to advertise, though, especially if it is a very, I mean, everybody walks. two sides for them to advertise though, especially if it is a very, I mean, everybody who walks to the bleachers has to walk right past it.
They've been putting their banners on the fence right outside the concession as you buy, as you walk in to get your ticket. And, and so they also, they still have that fencing area to use as well if they wish. Those aren't. Those aren't seen from the parking lot if you use the parking lot side of option A.
Right.
Well, call the question. We have it on the, you know, we have a motion on a second. Let's, Erin's gonna withdraw her motion.
Erin, you're, you're still good with your motion, right, for option B?
Yeah, I'm back on Mary's team.
All right. Roll call vote, Paula.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dr. Enziger Fosero?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. I'll add that to the topics of items that we discussed longer than the van discussion. So just. I think we surpassed the van discussion. So I will, I will move on to Board Action, new business with the election of the CSIU Board Directors. This is something that we typically get in person. So what I thought we would do here is just Paula will go down the list and we can either vote in favor of, well, before I get to that. Paula, Steve, that's, is that acceptable for us to do this by voiceover, Zoom, rather than having it in person? There's no.
Yes, I believe so, yes. And you're voting in favor of the slate. So if you'd look over the candidates, you're not talking about, unless you want to remove a specific candidate, you're not gonna do individual candidate votes.
Right. Okay. I just want to make sure. So there's three options. We would vote in favor if down at the bottom, vote in favor of the slate of candidates presented. The, the second option is to vote in favor of the slate with the exception of one or more names. And then you do not vote in favor of the slate. So we have three options. Paula, I will ask you to go down through each board member and take a vote.
Can I just quickly interrupt and say, these are all really great board members. Suzie just started. I don't really, can't really speak to her, but everybody else is a really great contributing member in that board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marion. Paula?
Mr. Heath?
I'm good with the slate.
Dr. Jablonski?
I vote for the slate.
Mr. Rowe?
Slate.
Ms. Stanton?
Slate.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Slate.
Dr. Enziger Fosero?
Slate.
Mrs. Brows?
Slate.
Mrs. Clark?
In favor of the slate.
Mr. Fetter?
In favor of the slate.
Motion carried for the slate.
All right. So moving on to the election of the Board Treasurer. I will open the floor for any nominations from the board for the School Board Treasurer for one year beginning July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2021. Are there any nominations for the treasurer?
Nominate Dr. Jablonski.
I second it.
For the motions, we don't need a second, so we have
Mary's got it.
nomination on the table. I can either do another nomination or entertain a motion to close nominations.
I move the motions be closed or the nominations be closed.
I second that. So the nominations are now closed. Moved by Mrs. Brows, seconded by me. Any discussion? I believe we can do this by voice vote. So we are moving to approve Dr. Jablonski as the Board Treasurer for the one year term. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Oh, I said aye. I completely forgot. Yeah.
Erin did not vote for herself. Motion carries.
Thank you so much, guys. Love my spreadsheets.
We love that you love your spreadsheets.
I was just gonna say, Erin, thank you for loving the spreadsheets because we all appreciate, we all appreciate the work that you do for that. We will move on to the MOA for employees. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one.
Playground fence crash bar.
Right. We'll move on to the playground fence crash bar. John?
Yep. Mr. Gallegos and I can answer any questions that you might have. But basically this would allow for quick exits from our three playgrounds in case of an emergency. Cause right now there are padlocks there that require keys in order to exit. So we would ask that the board approve these so that they could be installed. And the kids could exit quickly if necessary.
And before we open it up and take a motion, I will say you guys all see the picture that's attached. When this topic came up, my only concern was the possibility that somebody could reach between the chain link fence and possibly open it from the, from the outside. You know, gaining quick access from the outside to the interior. John and Steve had gotten me the picture that you guys all see where that it is much more difficult. You can't just reach in and hit the crash bar. There is a, you know, blockade, a wall, a barrier there that you can, you know, reach in or, you know, have a stick and reach in and do that. So if you look at that picture as well, it eased my mind a little bit as well that we're not gaining access from the outside more easily. So so I will entertain a motion to approve the crash bar installation.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mr. Heath, I believe.
Yes.
All right. Any discussion?
Sir, sorry, is there a safety concern with children being able to break free, run, runoff?
Certainly you always have that issue with runners. I think the bigger thing is that this came out of our school safety work group. And the fact that we are potentially having, if the bad guy comes in the north end of the building and the kids escape the south end into a playground that they then can't escape from the playground. That's the larger and more important issue for us in terms of school safety.
I assume that children are never on the playground without an adult who would notice if a child.
Correct, correct.
Will we still allow the playgrounds to be open during non-school hours? Cause right now they just like open the gates, they take the chain off.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. In, in a non-COVID world, absolutely.
Right.
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please Paula.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dr. Enziger Fosero?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
And Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Now to the MOA for employee 2020 dash four. Kathy?
Thank you. This is a staff member who found herself in the situation of caring for her mother after a very serious stroke and it led eventually, of course, to her mom's passing. Her bereavement days exceeded what she had entitled to her in the contract. Contract language does allow for some additional days to be moved from her sick days to bereavement days. The MOA spells it out with every day date and, and specific detail. We ask the association that they author the MOA so that we would have the clarity and payroll and, and appropriate the days as they should be for the time missed by our staff member. We ask that you approve that this evening.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dr. Fosero?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Steve, I'll turn it over to you for the next item for the non-professional staff evaluation extension.
We completed enough of the school year for principals to do evaluations on non-professional staff. These would be the secretaries, the parapros, custodians, et cetera. The power in evaluation is the conversation you have with the staff member. And obviously, school closure and COVID has prevented us from getting together. And so what we're asking for is that the board extend the time limit for the 2019, 2020 evaluations through December 31st, understanding that the following year's school evaluations will be done on a normal timeline.
Moved by Mrs. Brows, I believe that was.
No, it wasn't me.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Using us because we look alike, I think.
I'm looking at my paper and it's hard. All right. So moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, John, I'll turn it over to you for the installation of the drainage swale between Pauling and the middle school.
Yes. So as we discussed previously, in the recent heavy rains that we had a lot of runoff coming from Pauling and heading north towards our neighbors' properties. And it formed a nice little lake in several of the backyards. So we've been talking with our ELA and Bellas Property Management and we think a simple swale and berm combination will allow us to channel the water running off of Pauling and will send it out to the west to the retention pond that was built for just that purpose. So we would ask that you approve that this evening and Bellas will schedule it as quickly as possible and we can be good neighbors to our friends west of the middle school.
So moved. Mary, Brows.
Moved by Mrs. Brows. Is there a second?
Dr. Jablonski second.
Seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please Paula.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dr. Enziger Fosero?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. That concludes the Board Action. We'll move on to the Board Information, New Business.
We started interrupting. Were we supposed to talk about a freezer? Oh, that's on the consent. Never mind. Sorry.
Yes, so that'll be on the consent. Mrs. Moser, I'll move to you for the new curriculum materials for the 2020-21 school year.
Great. So you have the attached sheet that has the titles of proposed textbook purchases as well as literature titles. Keep in mind, this is for information. The first time you receive it, we'll come back the next meeting and ask for approval. We keep a textbook inventory of titles. We keep an approved reading list for the literature pieces. I added an additional comment to the bottom, given the very nature of the way we're doing business, you certainly might have some additional things brought forward as teachers make that mindset shift from finishing this year to really looking at what they need for next year. So it's here tonight for information.
Thank you, Kathy. Moving on to the Board President's Report, I'll save my comments for, after the consent agenda, other than again, PSBA continues to send out just a lot of information. As we all know, there's just, you know, it's a revolving door of information and, and things. It's a very fluid situation. So as things come out, I continue to encourage the board to, you know, keep up with the PSBA stuff and, you know, also the updates. Steve, I'll turn it over to you for the Superintendent Report.
Well, I just wanna again, give my thanks to all the administrators who've been working so hard throughout this very unique spring, whether it be delivering meals or trying to close out a school year without kids, cleaning lockers, organizing all the personal belonging returns, just doing a lot of that stuff. Our custodians, our secretaries and our teachers, of course, we just finished up Teacher Appreciation Week. And we can't forget all that they're doing to try to support our kids. One of the things that I asked of principals at a, a meeting a week ago was, were they confident that that all kids were being accounted for? And they provided numerous examples of how they themselves, the teachers and counselors are assured that though all kids might not be doing all the work, we're certainly being accounted for and that we're checking in on them to make sure that they're okay. So greatly appreciate that. The administrative team will start, they have a planned meeting Monday morning to start looking at different scenarios for next year. Jordan's right, everything is so fluid. We get something new all the time. So we're trying not to get ahead of ourselves, yet we know we have to start planning for different scenarios. And also we'll let you know that as of Monday, June 1st, all 12 month employees will be returning to their normal schedules.
Thank you, Steve. We will move on to any Board Liaison and Committee reports. Have there been any committee or other board meetings that anybody would like to report to us on?
We had a policy committee meeting on Monday. We talked through a lot of things, including class ranks and things having to do with the use of the facilities. They'll be coming for first reading at our next board meeting.
I use meeting next week.
So is son.
We had a school safety meeting to close out the year recently.
The Alumni Association met two Thursdays ago. They did move the meetings back to Thursday nights. I typically don't get to attend just because they fall on the same evening as our board meeting, but I did join it on Zoom. There was just a lot of discussion about how the Alumni Association could support the graduating class. I believe they were going to reach out to Paul and Eric as they brainstormed some ideas to see what, you know, what they could do joining the high school, you know, celebrating the seniors. And they also discussed, sorry, I'm looking at my notes. The cancellation of Alumni Weekend. Unfortunately, they decided to go ahead and cancel that because the planning has already started for October. And just with so many unknowns, they decided to cancel that. So you know, add that to the slate of items that are unfortunate that have been canceled, but they did announce that two weeks ago. So that's also been postponed or not postponed, has been canceled for this year. So those are the main updates that I have from the Alumni Association. Any other reports? All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. Just as a reminder, as Dr. Jablonski said, or take notice, there is the emergency replacement of the condenser at Kelly. So just an FYI, making sure everyone saw that. Are there any items that any board member would like to have removed and voted upon separately?
Can I ask a question about that? I mean, which may mean we need to pull it out. I don't know what the procedure is, but did we not just buy that piece of?
Nope. This was the freezer and refrigerator at Kelly were both the existing units. They were taken out. They were put in storage and they were returned and then they plugged back in, turned it back on and they were working. They were put in storage and they were returned and then they plugged back in, turned it back on and they were working. But again, they are 26 years old and-
Got it.
The end of its life.
Okay, thank you.
You might remember the extensive refrigerant R22 conversation?
Yes.
All right, so I will take a motion, entertain a motion for, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved, Dr. Zimmerman.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just make for just public acknowledgement of the Bucknell Panhelic, Panhelic Helen, whatever that word is. The Greek Student Organization reached out to us and put together a fundraiser to support student feeding to the tune of $1,400. Just, just great thanks to them. And again, sometimes, whether it be high school kids or college kids, they don't often get the, get acknowledged for the good work they do as opposed to maybe some of the poor choices they make. They do a heck of a lot more good than they do, than they make poor choices, so.
Did we send them a thank you card?
Yes, we'll do that.
We will definitely do that.
That's great. Thanks, Steve, for saying that.
Yeah.
And I skipped my president's report. I was also going to also note the anonymous donation as well to the Food Service Fund. I think we live in a very, you know, we're very fortunate to live in the community that we do. I was, I joined on the Zoom meeting today with the Green Dragon Foundation. We meet monthly. We see the anonymous donations, the, you know, the Bucknell Group donating. I think it's incredible to see in this time how many people are stepping up and, you know, just donating and trying to raise funds for everybody in need. So just a little pitch, you know, we certainly appreciate that. And I think it's, it speaks volumes to our community. And, you know, it's, it's certainly awesome to see in a time where you see so much negative. It's really cool to see the the positive things that are going on. So I'll get off my soapbox, but I just wanted to, you know, just kind of highlight those things as well as what Steve said. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, roll call Paula.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Brous?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Fetzer? Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so just like I did last time, I think it's probably easiest just to open up the floor for any director's comments. So if anybody has anything and they want to jump in here, rather than going around the room, since we're all in different rooms, we'll just kind of open it up.
Super quickly, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Oswald, for the presentation on food, but I think you really do highlight how much need there is in the community if we're serving still hundreds a day. And so just, yeah, I hear about it because I know people are working on it and I see people nodding because you're doing the deliveries and thank you for doing that. You see that people are relying on this.
I was just going to chime in, then I was on a PSBA conference today and listening to people around our region talk about the various things that are going on. The one overwhelming fact that keeps, that keeps coming back is the, is the financial piece in terms of revenues coming from the state. And I know that everybody probably knows that already, but I just felt like we should reiterate it that there's, there's basically nothing concrete coming out of, coming out of Harrisburg or coming to districts telling us in terms of what we're going to get for funding next year. So I just think it's important that we be as prudent as we can with the money that we have because we don't even know what we're going to have.
I just want to second that. I, I found it interesting watching the news last night. Other than seeing Mr. Fetzer on the news last night, I saw that the, the Pittston, no, Pittston, Pottstown School District is having to furlough quite a few staff and cut a lot of programs. They're thinking of cutting their, their middle school sports programs. And it just made me really appreciate our school district as well as the, the hard work that Mr. Fairchild does for, for the district and the budget. So I think we have to be very careful and very prudent moving forward, but yet still very grateful for all that we do have.
I'm going to second what Lisa said. And there are districts much closer than that right around us, right next door, that are going through the same thing. So grateful for where we are and what we have and that we're having conversations about options still. So that's really great. And I just want to thank the administrators. I know you all have been putting in a lot of hours and you've been trying to make a really difficult situation for so many people bearable. And I know that's hard work and I know a lot of people, you know, you don't always hear how grateful people are and sometimes you hear criticisms and I just, I just want you to know that I really appreciate, I'm also a parent. And so, you know, I appreciate you from that vantage point as well. So thank you.
I'd like to echo Mary Ann's comments and, and just say for, to the administrators and to give you a message to carry back to the teachers that everybody's doing a job that they didn't sign up for and that they weren't necessarily trained for and that is hard in ways that none of us ever imagined. And you guys are doing that job so well. And I feel like our kids and their families are being really well taken care of and it just speaks really well to our community. So I'm personally grateful and I, I know that I speak for others in expressing that gratitude. And then I would also just like to return again to Mr. Oswald and thank you for everything that you're doing to make sure we're feeding people.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say ditto on everything what everybody said was well said. I appreciate all the hard work John and Steve have done to keep the budget numbers down. It's a team effort and I think we have a very strong team as Mary Ann had mentioned it. We're all going through tough times, but our teachers are in the trenches with our students and we have to give them kudos. So thank you.
Lisa, you mentioned the news last night. I was working yesterday and got two phone calls from Pittston and I didn't listen to them until, or I didn't answer them just because I didn't know the number. And when I heard it was WNEP, I frantically thought, my heart kind of sank and I thought, oh no, what happened in the district? So normally when the daily item or news reaches out unexpectedly, it's, sometimes your heart kind of sinks. I was very thankful to learn nothing happened. They were just involved my business. So and I would just also like to add, I think that we've done it, you know, we joke a lot about the van discussions and the shed discussions and but I think, you know, I think we've always as a board not taken lightly a difference of $900 or, you know, $1,500. I think I also echo, you know, and now's more important than ever, but I do appreciate all of the discussions, even though they do drag out sometimes. I think it's certainly for a good reason. So I think our, our board really, you know, takes a lot of pride in the way that we spend money and we really, you know, we really scrutinize how, you know, how we do that. And I think we do it in a professional way. But I really, you know, I certainly appreciate that and I know the community appreciates our, us being good stewards of the money. So thank you. I would echo everything else, but I just wanted to put that little plug. You know, we make light of the long discussions, but I think it, it also sends a message as to, you know, how important these little decisions are that we all make. Any other comments? All right, I will move on to any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. If there's any citizens who would like to make a comment to the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time.
Hello, board. Matt from the Standard Journal. Can, can you all hear me?
Yes.
We can, yes, Matt.
Oh, oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just on audio tonight, just doing, just doing the phone. Just a couple of quick questions here, and, and I did text Jordan these questions, but I, perhaps his phone is not on. So let me just quickly look at those questions one more time. All I wanted to know was, is the food service running a deficit at the current time? If so, what is that amount?
It's approximately $29,000 deficit through the end of April.
Okay, $29,000, okay, through the end of April. Okay, that's one. The other one was, what was the cost of the three crash bars for the school playgrounds?
$12,273 for all three.
Yes.
For all three. All right.
Sorry, Matt.
That is all. I appreciate your, you're unmuting me. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thanks, Matt. Mr. Kokonas?
Um, let's see. Kokonas.
Mr. Kokonas.
And Mr. Kokonas. Yes. You can hear, you can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, thank you all for the work you're doing and for addressing a lot of complicated issues at this point. We had heard that you were all talking about making changes to the class rank policy and I just wanted to present one perspective of it, perspective that's maybe not been presented before. And that is just that we are concerned about changing the policy at what is essentially the last minute for the junior class. We have a student who's a junior and he has made decisions with regard to standardized testing based on the assumption that class rank would be part of his college applications. For instance, he didn't score as well as he had hoped on his ACT. But he didn't retake it to try to get a better, better score in part because he thought that his college applications would include the objective measure of his class rank, which, you know, importantly is reflective of sustained effort over many years and not single-day high-stakes testing. We're aware that many kids take standardized tests multiple times to maximize scores or they take both the ACT and the SAT and submit the higher of the two. We, as parents, have discouraged this sort of approach because we think it's excessive, unhealthy, and also expensive. And so we just want to, just, I guess, state that we think it would be unfair to change the policy with regard to class rank for the junior class because essentially this is, this is the last minute for them. And that's all.
Thank you for the comments. You know, we certainly are in the process of reviewing all of that. Just for your information, those, the policy committee met. They'll be sending some recommendations on to the board. There is a first reading and then a second reading. So as a community member, you will have more opportunities in the next, over the next few board meetings to also review those as we review them and also make further comment, you know, should you feel inclined after you see the policy. So I would certainly, you know, encourage everybody to, you know, stay informed and as we post those on our website and on all the agenda, we will certainly, you know, take further comment as well from everybody. Should there be any, anybody feeling inclined to make those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other citizens' comments to the board on a non-agenda item? John, do we have any others?
Yes. Ms. Bahoney? There you go.
Hello, thank you so much. I just wanted to speak also because I know similar to many of the other juniors, there are lots of different changing situations that as we're facing new things that are resulting from the COVID-19 closures. I know that a lot of colleges are adopting test optional policies for the fall, so many people's plans are changing because of those reasons too. And it's definitely a reasonable concern. But another thing that I would like to bring up that many students are unable to plan for is the fact that we are missing a semester of grades which will further generate imbalances in class ranks and create further educational inequities as we look at this tool of comparison among students as many students' junior years and sophomore years, freshman years, aren't going the way that they planned. And I think that's just another thing to keep in mind that people's plans may have changed from the new policy actions as well as the COVID-19 closures, which is impacting us now. In this current world crisis, this is just something that we should keep in mind and that it's changing many things for many students' plans as well.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate those comments. And again, you know, I would definitely encourage, as I just said, everybody to, you know, stay tuned as we continue to take a look at these policies. We certainly, you know, the board always welcomes feedback and input, you know, from everybody. So we, we appreciate the comments and we will certainly, I'm sure, be hearing more about this as we take a look over the next few board meetings. Any other citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items?
Doesn't appear we have anybody else.
All right, so we will move on and I will take a motion for adjournment this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brous, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.